Okay, call the meeting to order, May 13, 2024. Please, please stand for salute to the flag. Please remain standing.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing as we honor veterans both here and abroad and both past and present for their service and honor. Please be seated. We have a full day, so all votes will be done by voice. This meeting is being recorded and available on DCTV on their YouTube channel. No appointments tonight. First item of new business is the town meeting warrant. Vote and sign. We have two articles to review. One of them is Article 28, which is the omnibus article, and the other one is the DPW, 31, which is the DPW. So, the omnibus article. Heidi, you want to?
Thank you, Mr. McGinnis, for printing out, for printing out this document. We, on the charter commission, chose to, as you can see with the darkened, striked-out, bolded print, hoping that this would be legible to town meeting members and not cost prohibitive. We initially thought we would do it in different colors to mean different things, and in the end, when we saw what that might cost for printing, had a panic attack and decided we had to do it a different way. So, as you thumb through this, you will see a lot of it is, a lot of it is correction in grammar, correction in case of letters, so either it was written in a lowercase and it needs to be in uppercase. That is primarily what this is. There are some parts that, because at other times, items were taken out of the charter but never renumbered or relettered, now we're relettering them. So, it's a combination of a lot of cleanup, which took the charter committee quite a while to go back and forth to make sure that it represented what we needed it to represent and that the language was viable for the next 10 years. As you know, it's something that we look at every 10 years as the charter. One of the biggest things that we had to insert in here, or most important, was the fact that we were not just posting items to a stationary bulletin board outside the clerk's office, because prior to this, that was the only way to do such things. So, this also has in here information on, you know, the local newspaper, and which, even that has gone away, but we did add some electronic media language. The town bulletin boards, we added, and a website. The term is also inclusive of the Town of Dartmouth website and town calendar where public information is posted, trying to get that level of technology into the article. This for town meeting warrant, this item would be Schedule B. So, we're very familiar with getting Schedule A, which is the budget. This would be Schedule B, which would be something that the town meeting members would be looking at when they get, hopefully before the meeting. But when we get to Charter Amendment 28, or Article 28, it says, "As shown on Schedule B, deletions are shown in gray highlight strikeout and changes or additions are shown in gray highlight bold italics for emphasis only." So, this contains multiple amendments, being housekeeping corrections for items such as spelling, grammar, syntax, punctuation, clarifying phrasing, making, naming conventions consistent, updating references, and eliminating unnecessary language repetitive with state law, and which shall be presented as a single referendum, which shall take place July 1st, go into effect July 1st, 2025. So, we held off last week voting on this, rightfully so, because you had not seen it. But tonight, if you want to just take a look at it, there's a lot of changes.
Comments from the board?
David? Question. Are there any, so there aren't any changes that don't come under that description you gave, that are more, less, more than just typo or language changes?
No, any more than this has their own article.
Okay, so these all fall under that description you just gave?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, this is just mostly...
Housekeeping, basically.
Yeah, basically what it is, it changes, fixes Scrivener, Scrivener's errors, capitalization, numbering of some, you know, of some items, you know.
Right.
So.
We also wanted to make sure that our charter reflects how in Dartmouth we're doing business, and that each article is to clean up the way that the charter is written.
Motion to, if there's, if it would be a motion to accept is to recommend the article. Then that's what, both articles, 28 and 21, we're looking to recommend, and then after that would be a motion to sign the warrant. So, is there a motion on this, on this, on the, on Article 28?
Motion to, to accept.
Recommend?
Second.
Is that a motion to recommend?
Recommend.
Is this, is this the one that I also have to second, because we have members of the charter?
Yes, that would be great if you...
I'll second that.
Thank you. Motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by Mr. Tattlebaum. On the motion, any questions? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None unanimous? Okay, that's one, one more to go. Article 31, this is the DPW article. Okay, Ms. Brooks, you want to?
Yep, sure. So, this one, if I'm just finding it within, if you look on page 19 of the omnibus corrections article, you will see that when we talk about the first sentence of Section 4-5(c), which is actually at the top, at the bottom of page 19, this is just, what we're looking at is the corrections, and what we're suggesting here is that the first sentence be deleted and replaced with the following sentence. "The select board shall appoint for a term of not more than three years and shall fix the compensation of the superintendent of public works, who shall exercise and perform under its supervision and direction such of the powers, rights, and duties assigned to it under the subsection as it be, as it may, from time to time designate." And I want to say right here that this should read Director of Public Works, not Superintendent, because the Superintendent, if you look at C, it's Director of Public Works, and this should read Director of Public Works, because under the Director, he has several superintendents in charge of water, I believe sewer, and highway. So, Article 31 should read Director of Public Works. And that is the only thing Article 31 is changing.
So, Article 31 is only changing the appointing authority of the Director of the DPW, that's it? And generally, any of the department heads that get appointed is usually done jointly with the Select Board and whatever department that has. We've done that in the past, correct?
And we certainly would want to have input with the Board of Public Works. It currently is the only appointed board that hires and affixes compensation. So, that's different than any other board, and we're just trying to bring the board into alignment with all other appointed boards.
Questions? Mr. Tattlebaum?
Since we met last week, I've had many conversations regarding this issue, trying my best to understand as best I can with the perspective that I have. And I, I do sincerely believe that in a vacuum, this would be a great idea, and even going from three to five members would be a great idea. I just don't, I still have a problem with the timing with the incoming of a new town administrator, who would be directly involved in legislating how we, what we do and how we set up the Department of Public Works, and we do, in my view, have a very more energized and qualified DPW board, who was promised and pledged to do some work to look at how we do, how we structure the relationship between the town administrator, the DPW, and the Select Board. I just don't think it's a good message at this point in time, and we can always do it at another time in the fall and go out. So, I'm going to vote against this because I think the, for those reasons, and I think I understand the issues, and I still feel the same way I have, and I'm going to, that's what I'm going to stand on.
So, I'll clarify, our role currently in looking at this would be just to accept this article for the warrant, and then we would take our second roll call would be in support of the article. And so, we can, we have to move it forward, and then you can vote that you're not in support of the article. And then I believe that at town meeting, both sides will have an op, I know that both sides will have an opportunity to speak on the article.
Okay. We didn't vote to accept the article, any other article on the warrant. It was just to recommend or not recommend the article. So, it's just a single vote.
Single vote?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, I can, I can understand Mr. Tattlebaum's concerns, but all this does is bring a concern that the board had when we were first discussing the hiring of the Director of the DPW, that it was an appointing board that was hiring him, which was fine, but they were also fixating, fixing the compensation, which is the only appointing authority in the town that does this. All the major department heads, those contracts come through this office. In, in, in having that done, this does not in any way, shape, or form, telling the Board of Public Works how to govern the DPW. It doesn't tell them at all to do that. As a matter of fact, the current director is under a current contract, so if and when the new town administrator is hired, he will have, he or she will have the Director of the Board of Public Works already contracted. So, I don't see, I don't see where this would harm the, what the, what the Board of Public Works needs to do to get the DPW, you know, doing what they have to do through all the, through all the, through all the consulting and the studies being done. I don't see where that would in any way, shape, or form jeopardize this. This is just giving, this is just taking away one thing from them and pointing it to the elected officials, who also hire and fix the compensation for the town administrator, the finance director, Director of Financing, the planning, the planning director, all the other major, yeah, all the other, all the other department heads. This is the only department head that's not done by this board, and it's done by an appointed board.
So, the other thing is, I know I spoke to Mr. Almy and received communication from Mr. LaBelle with concerns about the efficiency study that they're running, and the efficiency study that they're running may impact Section 4-5b, but it will have no impact on Section 4-5c. So, because this is all where, that one area.
I, I, I accept all that, but to me, it's, this is a message to the board that it's not necessary, but it can, it also can be made at a different time. And it's been a long time since we've had a competent, energized, committed Board of Public Works, and I think we need, my sense is, we need to send that message that, do your work, come back to us, and not, and all the other issues, I agree with, in terms of, it may end up to be that way, but that's okay.
Well, let me ask this question, David. What's going to change, what's going to be the difference between June and October, if this is to be on the ballot in April, along with all the other charter stuff, if they pass, if they pass?
What's going to cha, what, what do you mean?
I mean, what's going to change? I mean, are we, I mean, are we going to have a huge?
Do you foresee that the Board of Public Works would want other changes?
I think that he said to us this meeting that, give us a chance to the fall, we're going to give you something. I, I don't, I don't have privy or private information. I know they're working on it, and I say, give them a chance to come back to us.
I think you're undermining the board at this point.
It's not necessary in a message, but, and he said to us at the last meeting...
Well, it certainly is something that if it was voted down at town meeting, or postponed in some way, it would be something, any number, any one of these eight amend articles is something that the charter committee would look at to perhaps put another, take another bite of that apple in October. So, there's another item that we did not bring forth at, in this time, that we will be bringing forth in October, all with the intent to be on the ballot for town voters in April 2025.
My last conversation with Mr. Almy, I had two days ago, just so I was clear, he, he made it clear that his, their goal is to present something, so that process will be honored, and the goal being that it'll be on the ballot for April, and he's prepared to, whatever that is, and it may be small, it may be large, to present it to us so it can be ready for fall town meeting.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. O'Neill?
My personal feel on this is that we've, we've had quite a number, sets of eyes from the Charter Review Commission, not just on this section, but on all the sections, and the omnibus shows the, you know, the amount of work that went into this by, by a number of citizens and elected and appointed officials. This particular section, to me, just stays very consistent with what the process was supposed to be, what the committee was charged with, was to try and clean things up. And in my personal opinion, in all due respect to David, I, I think this stays with the consistency of all the other appointed boards, and this particular director just happens to be an outlier. So, in my opinion, I think we, I look favorably upon this. I look, I look forward to the study that the DPW has, has been working on for quite a while now. I don't think anything in the study would change my mind on trying to keep this particular setup consistent with all the other boards in town. And, you know, I, I, you know, like I said, I look forward to the study, but I don't think there'll be anything in the study that would change my mind on this one particular issue. The three to five, like David mentioned, I think is a great idea. It wasn't presented, it was kind of, I think, caught late in the process with Charter Review, three to five meaning, three to five board members. I think, you know, that particular issue we'll bring up at a later date, but I think the board members are really put in a tough spot, because they, you know, it's so easy to hit that quorum, they can't even pick up the phone and talk to each other. That, that's an issue for another day. But, but my personal opinion is, this, this, you know, this isn't a major change from what I've seen with all the other departments. We're trying to stay consistent. The Charter Review people, probably 10 or 12 that I recall dealing with this one particular issue, and it does not stop the DPW from being involved in this process, but it does change the, the way the compensation in the contract is set up in, with their input. You know, in my opinion, I would require the input of the DPW board when it comes to this particular contract, because it's such an important position for the town, it's such an important budget. So, so I personally don't have a problem with it right now. Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, so, what's the board's, what's the board's pleasure?
I'll make the motion to accept for the warrant or...
Can he do that?
Yes. Yeah, he's, even though he was on the commission, he's still a selectman. Now, we've decided to put it on the warrant or not. That's basically, it's, it's in the warrant, no matter what. It's in the warrant.
No, I understand that, but I...
So, now it's whether to recommend it or, or not to recommend it.
We were voting technically, you couldn't do that because they were on the committee, and it should be done here. I'm not objecting to be on the warrant, I know...
We're not consistent in that point, right?
Well, then, you going to make a motion?
No, I, I'll make the motion, you can say it.
So, what's the motion?
The motion is to accept Article 31.
It's either to recommend or not recommend it.
Recommend it.
Thank you.
Second.
Oh, I can't second. If you want, you can keep this...
I'll second.
So, the motion is to recommend Article 31. On the motion, any questions? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Order one.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now I need a motion to sign the warrant, town meeting warrant.
Motion to sign the town meeting warrant.
Is there a second?
Yes.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by Ms. Brooks. On the motion, any questions? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None unanimous? All right, done. In the nick of time. Next item on the agenda, we have the town administrator search and transition discussion. In your packets last week, last week? Yeah, or the week before, you had two proposals, one from the Collins Center, one from Paradigm in Plymouth on the town administrator's search. As you know, Mr. McGinnis goes on vacation effective June 10th, and at that point in time, we will need to have somebody as a town administrator at this point in time. Because of the, we're four weeks away, for all intents and purposes. We have to decide how we're going to handle this. Are we going to have, are we going to go out directly to a search, or are we going to not take our time, but to go through and appoint an interim town administrator or town administrators, as we did the last time, when Mr. Kressman left, two individuals were appointed co-administrators while the search was being conducted. We can go, my, well, I interject my personal opinion on the matter. We can do many things here. We can go directly to a search. The search, I believe, if I'm mistaken, if, please correct me if I'm wrong, I believe it was 13,000 or 14,000? Right, with Paradigm being 13,000, Collins Center being 14,000. We also had an offer from our former town administrator, David Kressman, who would assist in the search and the perusal of applicants. That is intriguing to me, as is the Collins Center and the Paradigm, and I think we have a choice here. I think what I'd like to do first and foremost is we need to set up the job description. Currently, our job description for the town administrator post... Currently, our job description for the town administrator post is one that is clearly over 30 years old. And it says it as the executive administrator. We no longer have an executive administrator. Our charter says town administrator, and our job description has not come up with, our job description doesn't go again, goes against what the charter says. So I took it upon myself to give, to do a job description. I went through approximately six or seven, six, seven different towns. Some smaller than Dartmouth, some that shared a town administrator, some that are larger than the town, and kind of went through the language. The language, some of the language that was in the executive administrator document is still here in this, in this draft. But there are some, there are some things here. This was sent out to the board members for their discussion. I did get some comments back. Any comments that were made as to syntax, language was put back, was corrected and sent. This document has been sent to Town Council for his review. He had two corrections which were made. But overall, Town Council, Sabastino, said, good job. So the first thing I want to take up is the, is the job description, so.
The first thing should be the change of the, from, from, from the, the old executive administrator to town administrator.
Right.
That's the first thing we need to do.
That would be with the job description.
Correct. That's the very first thing we need to do.
Right, but the thing is, is that we'd have to change the job description that says town administrator. We just can't change the executive administrator and then put down, cross it out and put town administrator. So currently, the executive administrator job description is three pages. The draft is five pages. And it pretty much takes involvement to basically what Mr. McGinnis does. I mean, it's, it's pretty much there. So I guess what I'm going to do is I'm going to ask each, if anybody has any comments on it. Feel free to say something.
The first question, Sean, that I have is, is, you know, was it changed? When was it changed and why was it changed?
The?
Job description?
The description, right. The title?
The title was changed over at least 15, if not 20, years ago. The job, the job description that's currently on, on file did not change. And as a matter of fact, when we were, six years ago, when we were looking for a town administrator, Mr. McGinnis reviewed the executive administrator job description as part of the job. So that was, that was given to him as to what was being done here. But the charter had changed the title, I believe, if not, I believe it was two charter commissions ago.
Yeah, I'm not seeing a date yet.
Yeah, there's, there's no dates on the charter changes, by the way, so.
But you've incorporated what was in the executive administrator's job description into the job description that you've written?
I would say pretty much 90% of it.
I mean, I don't think we have to kill ourselves on it. I think it's, there are enough catchalls in this thing that, that we can move it around a little bit. As far as the title goes, I don't know if it hurts or helps in the search. You know, that's the only concern that I would have. Does, does the recruiting company, or if we were to use one, would they prefer one over the other? What do they, what do they see in the field?
Well, it would be the one that's on the books. And they would be, and they would have to give them the executive administrator job description.
Yep.
So you're, you're coming to, you're looking for a job as a town administrator, going to a town that the job description still says executive administrator. To me, that tells me something.
What does it tell?
It tells us we're a little bit behind the times.
Well, but that being said, I mean?
It says that we're not taking care, we're not taking care of our stuff. That's what it says, Stanley.
It's a foregone conclusion what the, what this position's going to do, whether it's a town administrator or an executive administrator.
I would ask Mr. McGinnis himself, because when you are invited to events, you're definitely in rooms with town administrators, town managers, executive administrators. What do you think is the thing that signals a difference? And what makes it all common?
Well, a town administrator is more of a position like the town of Dartmouth has now, where the select board is the policy setting board and gives direction. The town manager position is more the town manager has more authority over a number of things. So those, the difference, those two, an executive administrator, it really goes back to much smaller communities where maybe they have a three-member board. It's more of a, you know, executive secretary type position. I mean, they're really outdated.
I've heard that, yeah.
You don't find many of them anymore. So it's usually just a town administrator or town manager.
I have a point of clarification here. Because it's in the charter as executive, are we bound to just use that because we can't, because we have to?
It's in the charter as town administrator.
It's in?
It's in the charter as a town administrator.
With, oh, the job description says executive?
The job description is completely separate from the charter. The job description is in the personnel handbook as to, you know, everybody, every position in town has a job description. The charter basically provides what can and can't be done in the town of Dartmouth. And it says that the person that, in the position of Mr. McGinnis, is the town administrator, not the executive secretary, not the executive.
The town administrator is the, is the best description of the job.
It is, it is. Whereas the job description is not, the current job description.
So what, what would preclude us from advertising for a town administrator?
Nothing.
Right, okay, so?
Nothing, except that we're using, we're using a old?
But we're going to have, we're going to have new responsibilities, not the old ones.
But the person applying for the job is going to be applying based upon the job description of the executive administrator, not what?
Titled as town administrator.
But it's, okay.
Do we have, do we have a legal opinion about this?
Yes, Anthony said that this is, this is good. We can, we can, we can update the job description of the town administrator from executive administrator to this.
And advertise it that way?
Yes.
Okay, so why don't we just move forward?
So with the new, with, with the draft that I came up with, or?
With a newer version of?
So in other words, just changing the word executive administrator on the old job description?
Isn't that what we're talking about?
No, we're?
Fifteen minutes?
No, we're talking about what is in our docket tonight on pages three, four, and five, which is the executive administrator, that instead we use pages six through 10, which is the position of town administrator. This is the document that we would send forth to either recruitment company or however else we're going to post the need for a town administrator. It is cleaner.
So our, our attorney says it's okay to do that one, so what's? Is there really any debate?
This went to town, after I got everybody's comments, I sent it to, I sent it to Attorney Sabastino for his review as to form language, and he sent it back, and this is good to go.
Okay.
And I think if we contract with either of the companies or with David Kressman, either of those companies or David Kressman may read that town administrator job description and offer insight if they felt something needed to be added or changed or tweaked in some way. So I think, but I think it's a, it's a great update because having looked at jobs, when you see a photocopy that we're seeing on page three through five, and I've seen this a lot, not only on this town, but others, you feel like this isn't really a community that has valued the work that they're doing. So, and I know in other, that our HR person is updating job descriptions on, in every other department.
Right.
Correct?
So while I run the subject, just for conversation, I think, we're not, I'm not positive exactly what Dave, Mr. Kressman really wants to assume as far as duties. Would, would it be best, so that we can iron this out and be positive about his, his suggestions on what he would like to do? And would it be better to, to ask him point blank? Would, would it be best for him to look over what one or two, one of the, either one of these two companies would propose to do the advertising for that job? Or would David feel comfortable doing that on his own? Would he like to work with them or would he, on his own? My question is, or do it on his own?
My conversation with Mr. Kressman is that he is not interested in an interim, an interim town administrator position.
Exactly, that's not, that's not what I said.
No, I'm just saying, I just wanted?
I know exactly what he said, because he told me the same thing.
I'm relaying this information that I had with him, the conversation I had with him. He did say that he would assist in the search.
Correct.
And me, from what I gathered from the conversation, is that Mr. Kressman would run the search. And not work with, not work with Collins Center or Paradigm.
I want to call him tomorrow.
But that's, but that's?
I want to call him tomorrow.
But that was going to be part two of this conversation. Okay, part one right now of conversation is the job description. So any further comments on the job description?
I had a comment.
Mr. Talabom?
I had a two-part comment. One has to do with the job description of the town administrator and a subsequent comment on the, on the role of the select board. And they, and I know this is not part of that conversation, but they're, they're related. I had, I had added to the town administrator's job that, that also, that the town administrator encourages, encourages thoughtful communication with all select board members with a goal of accountability and increased efficiency across the town. Allied to that, and married just as important, would be the role of each select board member in their communication back to the town administrator, which is certainly a part of the select board's role, not the town administrator, but that, that they're related. And frankly, I think it's critically important that this concept of communication between the board, town administrator, back and forth in both directions is an essential addition to what we do going forward.
Fully understand what you're saying. As far as, as far as the town administrator keeping the board apprised of things going on? Fully understand. What you asked for is the select board, you know, in reverse, doing the same thing. That, that belongs to the board, not on the job description of the town administrator. So this part of, this is what I feel. It sets exactly what you had said. As the select board's top administrator office, performing professional administrative, technical and supervisory duties in working with the select board to oversee town departments, activities, and projects, prepares and implements operating and capital budgets, conducts research and provides information, and serves as liaison and coordinator between elected and appointed town officials, employees, volunteers, and citizens. The town administrator provides leadership and direction in the development of short-range and long-term, long-range plans, provide professional advice to the select board and department heads, keeps the select board fully advised regarding the department, departmental operations, the availability of federal funds, grants, fiscal, you know, fiscal problems, administrative actions, and the needs of the town, and gathers interprets and prepares reports and recommendations to the select board. So that communication piece that you're asking is already right there in those two, in those two paragraphs.
Well?
Mr. Talabom, one thing that we haven't done is you and I sat down and gave the town administrator goals, and we said that we would then work on our select board goals. And I think that's an excellent opportunity to have those in, as our goals.
I understand the separation, and I look forward to discussion with what our responsibility is back to the town administrator. I understand that's a separate discussion. But I also know that versions of this whole issue were there before this. And I am highly sensitive to the, to the communication and quality of it on my term here for the six years that I've been here. And whatever we can do to ensure that the responsibility of each party that's stated, I don't think it's enough in there, because I do agree that there's avenues back and forth, but I think it's really important. And I think that, I think that its emphasis is critical to a good relationship between this board and each individual member.
And that's on us, and that's on us, on our goals as select people.
Yeah. Maybe if we had done that and critically accepted that responsibility, we might not be in this position today.
Not necessarily so. I, I think, you know, I mean, the goals, the goals that, I mean, we, we all had our goals. You know, we, we've had our goals before. We have our discussion as to where we want to meet and whatnot. We all agreed to it every year. You know, what, what Mr. Talabom and Ms. Brooks were going to do, we're going to expand upon those goals. So I don't see, I don't see, I don't see that.
I think the goals are, it's critical, it's worthy, and it's a separate discussion as well.
Correct. It is.
Knocking on that door of the, of the town administrator on a regular basis from every single member, and the town administrator stating that his main responsibility is to make sure that that line of communication is open, is what I'm talking about. And it may have been in here, and it was and it wasn't, but I think it's critical that it's stated that both, both parties have that responsibility.
Well, I don't think having the select board's responsibilities in the, in the, in the job description of the town administrator is necessary.
No, I'm talking, in this case, it has to do with the town administrator. And his or her responsibility.
I think it's already there.
Okay, I don't know it, but that's okay.
Any other comments? What's the board's pleasure on this?
I would like this to replace the current executive administrator's job description.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Thank you. On the motion, any questions? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Posed?
I voted in favor.
Okay, oh, I didn't hear you, I'm sorry. You said it so softly. Thank you, four to one, pass. Thank you, appreciate it. And I appreciate everybody's concerns and comments. Okay, so now, now that we have a new job description for the executive town administrator, that's history, for the town administrator. Now I can, now I can state my piece. I think at this point in time that we look in-house for two, and I feel right now for it to do with the co-town administrators. Gary and Chris have both contacted me. Both of them said they would be interested in the job. And I think at this time, this board should look to both Gary and Chris as co-town administrators. I think each one brings a set of skills that are needed for the position and will give us, will give this board and this community time to do a thorough search. Because right now, the market isn't that great. And I think, I'm not saying that the? And I think, I'm not saying that the market will be better in three months, I'm not saying it'll be better in six months, but personally, I like to see what we have in-house. And my, my opinion, only my opinion, is I think this board should appoint Gary Carrero and Chris Vitale as co-town administrator effective June 10th.
Interim.
Interim.
Interim. Yes.
Interim co.
Interim co, yeah. Effective June 10th. That's my opinion. Comments, suggestions, thoughts?
I think we would.
A comment.
Let me go to Mr. Mickelson first.
No, sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead, go ahead, Stan.
I think we really realize who we have. We've got two very bright young men. They do have very, have done a magnificent job in their positions. We couldn't be, as far as, as I'm concerned, I, I thought about you, you two individuals from the get-go instantly. And we're very fortunate, very fortunate that we do have you. And we'll get through the times, whatever it takes to, to hire a new town administrator. In the meantime, you, you'll have, as far as I'm concerned, the select board will be behind, be behind everything you do. And if you have questions, come to us, and we'll figure it out. And, and I wish you guys a lot of luck, and I know you will not disappoint. So I can't make a motion yet because I want to let someone else talk.
Plus, I think they also have, they also have the phone number and email of Mr. McGinnis because technically, Mr. McGinnis will be on vacation, so he'll still be the town administrator up until July 15th. So they'll have his, his counsel, which I know Mr. McGinnis will be, gladly would give. Ms. Brooks?
So that being said, and this is no disrespect to Chris or Gary in their positions, I think that they do a great job, and their positions, especially in Gary's case, is already very, very large. So I think the majority of this has to fall on Chris. And I, in addition to Mr. McGinnis's phone number and email, I am asking what else is out there for support for interim town administrators or new town administrators? Do they offer classes? No. So, and I know actually Chris was an assistant town administrator in another community before coming here, so he does have a little bit more experience. I just don't want to leave these gentlemen hanging if something comes up. So I was hoping that Dave Kressman would be sort of a mentor.
No.
To them.
Yeah, he won't.
He's not interested.
He will not do that.
No, I, right, because I, I put it to him this way. I put him as Obi-Kan Kenobi-Toluk Skywalker, and he said no.
No, I had the initial conversation with David. As soon as all this started to happen, I called him. Dave and I have been very, very close friends besides working as the town administrator and select board. We, we had a long-term relationship, it was wonderful. And, and my respect for that gentleman is, is enormous. So right away, I made that phone call. And he talked to his wife, Pat. Pat said, "Not a problem." And, but he was adamant that what he would do would not be filling in or.
Full-time.
He'd be giving his best opinions to replacing the town administrator and advertising for it.
I think as far as the support that you seek, like as, as, at least for the first few weeks, Mr. McGinnis will be available. And there are other, there are individuals who have come forward and said they'd be willing to assist, like I got an email from Cody Hadad.
Oh.
Said that Cody would be willing to assist and help out too.
So that's another call.
But Cody also is the town administrator for.
Halifax?
Thank you, okay, sometimes I get confused. With Halifax. So Cody would be available on Fridays. They only work Monday through Thursday over there. So I guess, short of the community, the short of the work week.
Cows are asleep after that.
Mr. Talabom.
Couple of comments, I, I think these are to find individuals, and it's a pleasure to work with them. Looking at the reality of it, they both are interested in the job itself, so they're both somewhat competing for the job. Also, I think it's critically important that we define the roles because who's in charge of what, or are they really, is it a blend? Can the select board, our members assist in trying to coordinate efforts and maybe getting updates on a regular basis, week to week? I, I think that without that well-defined role, and maybe they can help create that roles, I think it, we, it'll be, we're going to lose a lot of advantage of having two fellows who know the towns, you know, working fairly well.
If, if this is the way the board wishes to move forward, I would be more than willing to sit down with Gary and Chris to define the roles as chairman.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. O'Neill.
I, I really haven't had a chance to work all that much with either Gary or Chris. I know that they're both very well-respected in town. My, my concern is, is more from 10,000 feet in drawing a clear line of communication and responsibility in the town. Going from the situation that we will soon be in to a blurred line, I think, is sending a very poor message to the town, all its employees and all its departments. I need to make sure personally that whatever road we take, that, that the description is clear, communication is clear, that these are interims, that they can both apply for the position if need be, and if they, if they choose. Outside administration help is, I, I can see that becoming a problem fairly, fairly quickly. You know, when you look at co-chairmen, co-presidents, I, I can't look back and find too many that were hugely successful. I mean, I, I'm not sure, this, I, I know that we went without assistance throughout the, some of the departments for quite some time. And we installed assistants over, I don't know what period, maybe the last, what, three, four years?
Yes.
Right? And I think we did that to get a bullpen and to get some backup in these particular positions. And I think you, you choose your spot, given the, the hierarchy that you're trying to line yourself up for. So initially, my, my first impression, and again, it, you know, trying to put as much thought into this as I can in a shorter period of time, but I, I, I don't know. I, I don't think, I don't think it would work all, all that well to have copositions, unless it is absolutely crystal clear what the responsibilities are lined out so each and every employee in town, department head knows exactly who's doing what. And, and for them also. I mean, to, to put two professionals in a position like that without clear descriptions is putting them in a disadvantage right out of the gate, in my opinion.
Well, I think at the time when Mr. Kressman left, we had co-interim town administrators in Greg Barnes and Deb Malina Wenda. And I believe each one kind of had their own lane. Greg continued to do the financing portion of it, and Deborah continued to do a lot of the.
Administrator.
Legwork.
Yeah. Administrator.
Yeah, all the administrative stuff. But they worked together, and it did work out well. I think at this, this time, you know, I think we have, actually, we, I think we're in a better position this time around because we have somebody in the finance, like Mr. Barnes, but we, now we have somebody who's had administrative experience, whereas Ms. Wender, at the time, was mostly grant writing and whatnot, and Mr. Vitale has, you know, some administrative experience.
I don't think it's unreasonable at this point to ask, I'd like to hear from Mr. McGinnis, and I'd like to hear from two fellows about the reality of the situation.
Put her on the spot?
Mr. McGinnis. Where do you want to start tomorrow?
What would you like to hear specifically?
You comment any way you'd like.
Gary and Chris are both excellent employees. I think you see that, I can vouch for that, they both do an excellent job. You know, they haven't, neither has been exposed to the full kind of job experience. So we have, we have, you know, everything's a team effort, collaborative effort, so they're in the know. I think they're certainly capable of being co-interims, I think they would do a really good job. I think their skill sets right now offset one another. I mean, they're both great, but where their knowledge lacks, the other one picks up. So I think, you know, it's really just setting, you know, some parameters. And I, I don't think you need super clear lines, they work well together, I think they collaborate well, I think we've set an example here, so I think they know what they do well, they'll, they'll work off one another. I think they'd be a good team.
Thank you, Sean.
Then I would suggest that when.
Want to put them on the spot?
Sure.
Yeah, you can say nothing if you like.
Come right up.
It's okay with them. That's my request, and if there are disagrees, go right ahead.
So thank you for having us tonight, members of the board. So my tenure here has been about six years, and I started off as, as you know, the town collector. Greg Barnes left and assumed the role as finance director, treasurer for the town, worked closely with the current town administrator, worked very closely now with Chris. And we do bring different aspects to the, to the position, and I think that's unique. Going back to when Greg was here, you know, there was still a lot of transition between him and the finance department itself. I feel very confident right now that the finance department is pretty much where we need it to be. We just hired a town collector, and so some of that burden has been taken off, off my plate, if you will, so I can focus more now on the bigger picture items and where the town needs to be going forward. And in conjunction with what Chris is doing, I think that both of us, and I'm not speaking for Chris, but I think that, you know, we do work well together. And moving forward, we can probably address a lot of the issues in the short term. I believe that to be the case.
Thank you.
To pick back off what Kerry said, you know, we have a great working relationship, both with the capital, proven plans that we've done over this past year, the development of the budget this past year, working in collaboration with Mr. McGinnis. And I also, day in, day out, I work with Sean on upcoming agenda items, things with regards to our property leases, capital projects, grant applications, and we're more or less in communication throughout all of that. We sit in meetings every week or every other week to go discuss items on the town meeting warrant, questions with regards to budgeting, so we have had and we will continue to have a good working relationship together throughout this process.
Right, thank you.
One more thing, one more thing, Mr. Chairman, if I can add. I think that even though we're going through an interim process, it's still, it's still very important for lines of communication to continue to be open with the board. And I know that, that is the key to making all this work, even in the interim. And I don't think that that needs to, that has, that can lack for the, for the short term.
Communications.
Thank you, fellows.
Thank you. Anybody have any?
I had enough.
Okay.
The only thing I want to say is, I agree, Sean, when you sit down with the two of them to talk about lines, but I really want Sean McGinnis to be there as well, since he knows their strengths. And this is, to me, the, one of the few departments that actually has a succession plan, because Mr. Vitale has been working with Mr. McGinnis. And so having him step in as the interim, he'll bring that knowledge with him. So that's, that's been our, our, our plan in Dartmouth, so.
So moving forward, we can do one or two things. The first one is we can sit on this for another week to decide what we want to do. Or we can move forward, appoint the two individuals as co-interim town administrators with the proviso that they work closely with Mr. McGinnis for the next.
Four weeks.
Four weeks, and make sure that they have Mr. McGinnis's telephone number and email for the, for the, for the time after that. And that within the next, within the next couple of weeks, I'll sit down with both of them, Mr. McGinnis, and we'll go over basically what's what, and how, how we want to do this moving forward. So I am at the board's pleasure here.
My comment is, we do it tonight, and I also would like to be sure to add that whatever we set up as communication back to the board and how they report to us, it'd be done on a regular basis, whether it be every day, every other day, every week, whatever it turns out to be, that is well-defined. So they know that they can rely on us to report to us, and we're going to listen to it, and they give the feedback back.
I don't have, I don't have any, any problems with communication. What I, what personally I try to avoid is micromanaging. That's not my role here. So they are hired to do a specific task, and they carry out that task. What does the board, what would the board like to do?
Do we need to vote on this?
Yes, we do.
How difficult.
You have two choices. We can, if you're going to tell me you want to vote on it tonight, somebody can make a motion, or you can tell me I want to chew on this for another week.
But we need to, but we need to vote on the council.
Anyway, we'll have to.
And vote.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sean, how difficult, Sean McGinnis, will, will it be for you to set the lines of authority between two versus one right now for the department heads and the employees at the town? In, in short order, too. I mean, if we're going to vote on this thing tonight, and I want, I want this to be, I want us to be in unison. I, I think we need to have a unanimous vote on this to send a strong message also.
Well, first off, if, if you vote, I mean, you still have to draft MOAs with each of the individuals for the position and the responsibilities and roles, so that can be divvied up. As, as well as defining that for other department heads, I don't think that would be an issue. I think it'd be, it could be pretty clear. I mean, it's certainly an interim basis, it's not your plan for the long term, but I think at the long-term interim of, you know, six months or so, like I think this, we're getting past town meeting, there's only real fall meeting, town meeting to get prepared for, collective bargaining wouldn't start till after the first of the year, so there's, there's time for all this, and I think you can, you know, the staff, the operations run on their own, I think they don't need a whole lot of guidance right, right now after town meeting, so I think you could make it pretty clear.
I think the timing is, is, is better right now.
Right now it is.
Fortunately. Mr. Chairman, I, I want to, I want them to know also that my concern is more for them than it is for the particular departments, because I, I think you're right, I think we can, we can line it up properly, but what I don't want is, I don't want them to be compromised over this period and cause problems for our, the town's relationship with them going forward. I, I need to make sure that it's done properly, clear, because I've seen these things wobble out of control, and it doesn't take too long for, for things to go south. So let's make sure we do it right.
Right, and, and I think that's, and I believe we can do right by them and by us and by the town. And I think the, I think once we have the MOUs drafted and reviewed, we, we have to look at that beforehand.
Okay.
So, and I think that's, once that's taken care of, then we know exactly what, you know, what, what we expect.
Know what they're getting into.
They'll, they'll know exactly what we expect of them.
Okay.
So I believe that tonight what we're doing is we're voting to create those MOUs.
Yes.
Because.
Right.
Until they see it in print and see what the responsibilities are and what a stipend that goes along with it would be.
So the motion right now would be to appoint Chris Vitale and.
Maybe, maybe to, maybe to offer, not a point, at this point.
All right.
To offer.
Okay, all right, I'll agree with that. To offer.
The interim co-town administrators.
Yeah, or offer the co-town administrator to Chris Vitale and Gary Carrero pending their acceptance of the MOU.
I would second that.
No, I can't make the motion. I can't make the motion.
Then I will make a motion to...
Offer.
Offer Gary Carrero and Chris Vitale the positions of co-town administrators.
Interim.
Effective...
June 10th.
June 10th, upon their acceptance of the MO...
Interim.
Interim. Co-administr, co-town administrators.
Pending success.
Pending their approval of the MOU.
I'll second it.
Okay. Motion made by Ms. Brooks, seconded by Mr. Mickelson. On the motion...
Does that include effective June 10th?
Yes.
On that motion?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. On the motion, any questions?
Is, is, is June 10th actually the day?
Yes.
That's the day.
June 10th, the, Mr. McGinnis officially goes on vacation.
Okay. All right. Okay. For the absence, right.
Yeah. Mr. McGinnis is here for town meeting.
Not for, not for leaving the job, but the absence from office.
Yes. Mr. McGinnis is here for town meeting, and we'll have a pie for him.
Yeah.
Okay. On the motion, any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed? None unanimous. Okay, gentlemen. Expect to hear from us shortly.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Town administrator update. Probably not much, because...
Yeah, I don't think so. No updates.
Wait, before we move on, we have these two companies that have sent in their information on searches, even though we have the appointment of the town...
We're going to keep those on file for the time being.
I want to, I'd like to call Dave Kressman, which I will do tomorrow morning.
Okay.
And go over that option, have, be very, very, I want to understand exactly what he would like to do.
Well, then I would like him to submit something like this, because I think when it's time to make this decision, we need to have all three company representatives in, which would be, Dave would be a third option.
We'll have Mr. Mickelson take care of that.
So can we, can we talk about when we're going to start this? I don't want...
I think at this point in time, let's get through the MOU and this situation, let's get this locked up, and then we can go probably after town meeting, start discussing that.
Dave, I think Dave's still on vacation, so, but he, he'll answer his phone.
Yeah. I remember seeing the pictures.
Yeah. He'll answer his phone.
So it's not possible that we next, we have a meeting next week to present three options, with one of which...
Not next week, no. I don't expect to see him next week for Mr. Kressman.
So next meeting after that?
Potentially.
Yeah. I don't want to drag our feet.
No, we're not going to drag our feet on it, that's for sure.
We want this moving.
Well, a worthy goal would be from June 3rd, to have the three options in front of us. That's a goal.
That's a worthy goal.
I think we need to charge Mr. Mickelson of that, to say we'd like to try to have June 3rd, if possible.
Yeah. I'll, I'll figure it out.
Put his feet to the fire.
June 3rd.
He'll get it. Because that would fold well into June 10th, town meetings, if we can.
Thank you. Should I?
Okay. A worthy goal.
June 3rd. Yeah. Yeah. It's fine for me. You know I'll be on the phone tomorrow morning, right?
I know you will.
Even before playing golf, that's correct.
Yes, she keeps me straight.
So, all right, so we have no town administrator updates, so I don't, assuming no updates on the new business, so no minutes. So we do have a meeting next week. We do have a full agenda.
Yeah.
Any particular highlight?
For next week?
Just off the top of your head?
No, nothing major.
Okay. All right.
So we're going to meet next week.
Yes. Yeah. This was, this was the, if we needed it, meeting.
And we did need it.
And we did.
And we did.
Glad we had it. Glad we had it in our back pocket.
So do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Moved by, moved by Mr. Mickelson. Is there a second?
Mrs. Brooks.
Seconded by Mrs. Brooks. On the motion, any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed, none unanimous. Good night, everybody.